And welcome to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council. Welcome to the enlarged media contingent. The opening prayer today is from Monsignor John Harrison. Thank you, John.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Eternal God, you have been faithful to your promise. You have kept your word. Now we must strive to be the people you made us to be. We must remember at all times that we are your creation and trust with fashioning the world according to your will and purpose. As we meet as council, we pray that you will guide us, opening our hearts and our minds, helping us to see you in each other and in the world around us. And all that is discussed around this council table will give us tolerance, understanding and insight to see that justice is achieved for the benefit of all of our citizens. Through your goodness, we are blessed with every message of hope and love to transmit. For this, we thank you. We ask all of this in the name of your son, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. We'll just conclude the same words here. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily prayer and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Right, we have an apology from Council of Tavish. I'll move from the chair that the apology be intended secondly, Council Staines. All those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. Confirmation of the agenda. I'll move from the chair that the agenda as published be confirmed with the exception that an item seventeen, A and B are transposed. That is all, that just those two items in A in seventeen come in a different order because B refers, I believe, to A and vice versa, and they just need to be in the original order. Second, Council of Staines. All those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. Item three is for noting. Item four. I'll move from the chair that the public part of the minutes of the meeting of the Dunedin City Council of nineteenth of May, two thousand and fourteen be confirmed as a correct record. Second, Council of Staines. Any discussion? Put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. I'll further move that the public part of the minutes of the extraordinary meeting of the Dunedin City Council held on the fourth of June, two thousand and fourteen be confirmed as a correct record. Second, Council of Staines. No discussion. I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. On to the minutes of committees. Item five, the Hareys Committee, Council of New.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is associated with seventy-six Vogel Street. Then I'll move that the minutes of the Hareys Committee meeting held on the nineteenth and twenty-first of February, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Benson Pope. Any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it.
I'll further move, Your Worship, and this is associated with five A Balkan Road, three-one-nine Brighton Road, Wardenville, that the minutes of the Hareys Committee meeting held on the tenth of March, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Wilson. Discussion. I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it.
And I'll further move, this is to do with two, eight-two Torrey Road, Dunedin, that the minutes of the Hareys Committee meeting held on the thirtieth of April and the twenty-ninth of May, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Vandivus. Discussion. I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it.
And finally, associated with one-nine-five Somerville Street, Dunedin, that the minutes of the Hareys Committee held on the fourth of June, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Vandivus. Discussion. Put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. Item six. Planning Regulatory Committee, Council Benson Pope.
Mr Chair, I'll move that the minutes of the Planning and Regulatory Committee meeting held on the third of June, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Hawkins. And I note that there's an additional report to be considered in the reports section of the agenda relating to this committee. No discussion. I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. Infrastructure Services, item seven, Council of Wilson.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll move that Part A, items one to nine and eleven of the minutes of the Infrastructure Services Committee meeting held on third of June, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Lord. Discussion. I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it.
And I'll further move that the following part, the item of the minutes of the Infrastructure Services Committee meeting held on third of June, two thousand and fourteen be approved. And that's item ten, the update on the South Dunedin Cycle.
Second, Council Lord. Discussion. Put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. Community and Environment Committee, item eight.
I move that Part A, items one to nine and eleven of the minutes of the, oh, sorry. Part A, items one to six and nine of the minutes of the Community and Environment Committee meeting held on four June, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Hawkins. Discussion. I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it.
And further, I move that the following Part B items of the minutes of the Community and Environment Committee meeting held on four June, two fourteen be approved. Item seven, Service Level Agreement and Statement of Intention, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. And item eight, Archibald Baxter Memorial Trust.
Second, Council Hawkins. I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. Item nine, Finance Committee, Council Thompson.
Your Worship, I'll move that the public part of the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting held on the ninth of June, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Calvert. Discussion. Put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it.
And further, that Part C, item six of the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting held on the ninth of June, two thousand and fourteen be noted. And I just note for the public record that that has already been released publicly.
Second, Council Calvert. Discussion. Put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. Item ten, Audit and Risk Committee. Item thirty, Council Thompson.
I'll move that the public part of the minutes of the Audit and Risk Subcommittee meeting held on the twenty-seventh of May, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Staines. Discussion. Put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it.
And further, that Part C, items nine and ten of the minutes of the Audit and Risk Subcommittee meeting held on the twenty-seventh of May, two thousand and fourteen be taken in the non-public part of the meeting.
Second, Council Staines. Put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Item eleven, minutes of the Community Boards, Waikato Coast, Council of New.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have received a slightly different motion to be moved for this particular item. And I believe PM has a copy. And it's associated with item six. So essentially, what's on our audit paper, that the minutes of the meeting Waikato Coast Community Board held twenty-one May, two thousand and four be noted, will become that items one to five, seven to ten of the minutes of the meeting of the Waikato Coast Community Board held on the twenty-first of May, two thousand and fourteen be noted, separating out item six, which needs a separate motion requesting some further information. Now, it's now up on board. So the second, associated with item six, the second motion, that the chairperson's report, Bank and Bay Roads, Warrington be adjourned, adjourned, until the council meeting to be held on the eighteenth of August, two thousand and fourteen, pending the receipt of advice. I'll wait until you get a second, and then I'll just make a couple of comments. Just to clarify.
You're seconding both those, Council Wilson? Okay.
With reference to the second motion, essentially, there is some legal advice being sought on this item. It's to do with access to the Blue Skin Bay on the corner of Bank and Bay Road at Warrington. And until that advice comes forward, we don't want to essentially approve this particular item.
We move it in second. I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. Item twelve, Ataga Peninsula Community Board, Council Pete.
I move that the minutes of the meeting of the Ataga Peninsula Community Board held on twenty-two May, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Hall. Discussion. I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. Item thirteen, Strath Tyre. Council Lord.
I'd like to move that the minutes of the meeting of the Strath Tyre Community Board held on the twenty-second of May, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Wilson. Discussion. Put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. Item fourteen, Moskew Tyre. Council of New.
I move that the minutes of the meeting of the Moskew Tyre Community Board held on the twenty-seventh of May, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Lord. Discussion. I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. Item fifteen, Chalmers Community Board, Council of New.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll move that the minutes of the meeting of the Chalmers Community Board held on the twenty-eighth of May, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Hawkins. And discussion, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. Item sixteen, Saddle Hill Community Board, Council Wai.
Thank you, Your Worship. I move that the minutes of the meeting of the Saddle Hill Community Board held on twenty-ninth of May, two thousand and fourteen be noted.
Second, Council Wilson. Discussion. I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Aye. Against. Carry it. Item seventeen, now you'll recall that we've changed the order of these, so this is seventeen B. And could I invite Miss Pimpfold? Oh, Jane, sorry. I just assumed it was your, this is seventeen B. So this is adoption of the annual plan. Right, welcome Jane. Is there anything you would like to preface, Mr Webb, before I ask?
All right, I guess a couple of comments I'll make is that there's been, as you're aware, there's been some like changes to the numbers, particularly around the statements and intents coming through from the subsidiary companies. And we'll get those numbers updated. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll get those corrected before the final version is completed. And there's also some minor typographical errors in the document that you've received that will also be completed.
So that's about it. Questions, councillors? Council of New.
Just got a question around the Waipori Fund, the socially responsible investment. The resolution that was passed essentially has been adopted in its, in its form into the annual plan. That's correct. And I just see the wording is not exactly the same. And I appreciate that some parts of the original motion weren't passed or weren't supported. But even removing those, there's, there's a word in there that isn't in the original recommendation that was passed at annual plan. So if you go to the document.
Mr Scott.
It's minor, it's very minor. But I imagine the intent was to reflect exactly what was passed at the page six. Results of the consultation process.
Are you mean to put it in the introduction?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Okay. You said it summarized, so.
And we've got socially responsible Waipori Fund. The first bullet point, the council will develop. So responsible, blah, blah, blah. The recommendation just.
No, because it's.
That the council develop. And it's just the word well is in there that wasn't in the original recommendation. I wasn't actually at council that day, but it just doesn't, it's not word for word. I'm just.
Okay.
If the intent was to have it word for word, it would be good if it. And the second part of the question is probably for the chief or the mayor. The idea is to do, obviously, develop a policy. And the ratification of that policy comes at a later date, sometime during the fourteen, fifteen year, I imagine. Is that? Thank you.
Further questions, Council Thompson.
Grant, it may have been part of what you were referring to, but just when you said that there are some issues around the forecasts from the statements of intent. But it just concerns me that I'm on page one hundred and forty-one in the forecast financial statements, that we have a long-term plan assumption around the DCHL dividend and interest payments. My, my reading of the statements of intent is that that is likely to change. Well, certainly, almost certainly will change. And whilst I accept that we can't just change these numbers on the hop, I did wonder whether it would be appropriate to put a, a note in the annual report that the, that the more recent assumptions around the forecast dividend stream are, are likely to change and that that will need to be reworked.
Right. So what we're looking at there is changing the actual numbers to reflect more closely the statements of intent. That would then also then have an impact on the rates being the corresponding number as well.
Well, that's probably a more thorough way of dealing with it.
I don't know, maybe next year.
So next year is fine, it's the following years that the issue is.
I just didn't want it to look like we were just ignoring it.
We're definitely not ignoring it.
Further questions, councillors? Someone like to move the recommendations on page seventeen point two? This is, we're still on B. Move, Council Staines, as, as the recommendations are, Council. Is there a second, second, Council Wilson? Discussion. Council Vandivus.
I have some severe reservations about the adoption of the plan. I accept that council has been generally pretty diligent about making sure that we don't continue what has been a decade of capital spending that was done on debt, unaffordable, and, and that there has been a concerted effort generally from councillors to try and pull back on capital spending. And for that, I'm extremely pleased. The exception to that would be the cycle lane spending that we're still pursuing. I don't believe it's appropriate in our debt situation, but that's for another argument. The, the three percent rates rise that we've managed to achieve ostensibly is still double inflation rate. Dunedin has a relatively unwealthy population, which, and that includes many people that are on fixed incomes. And when the rates rise at double the rate of inflation, it basically leaves them nowhere to go. So from that point of view, continuing three percent rates rises, I don't believe are sustainable. If we look at the big picture thing again, we have decades of deferred maintenance in Aurora that I've spoken about just about every year I think that I've been a councillor. And although there is now some recognition that there is going to be something done about it, what needs to be done is the spending of enormous amounts of money. And I don't believe that this annual plan really addresses that deferred maintenance issue. Similarly, there's been decades of deferred maintenance as regards drainage infrastructure for Dunedin. And again, this is something which has to some extent at least been acknowledged, I don't think enough. And again, looking forward, I don't think that this annual plan really does take cognizance of what we are going to be up against and what we need to rate appropriately for. And then a really thorny issue arises with the various different methods of funding the stadium. I have, for a long time, suggested that the actual building of the stadium and its purchase is a one-off, which, in my view, regrettable, is still something which could have been managed if we did things differently. But the ongoing enormous running costs of the stadium just seem, just seem to keep compounding every time we sit down to an annual plan. If I can just give you a quick flick through those sorts of costs, as I see them, and these hit you every year. Rate subsidy, one point nine million. Subvention payment, XDVL, seven point two-nine-two million. Subvention payment, XDVML, point five-five-five million. Community services subs, not a subvention payment, it's a subsidy, point seven-five million. Interest and debt payment subsidy, two million. Event attraction subsidy, point four million. Payment by DCC to DVML, one point four million. The list goes on. These are, in my opinion, not an acceptable way to deal with the running costs of the stadium. And for the, to have included these costs in our annual plan, to me is to tacitly accept this level of running cost spending, which I don't believe is responsible. So I see the Freudian phallic thing there is beeping at me, so I'll just cut to the chase and say that I wish to abstain voting on the annual plan. And I wish to give the reason for my abstention, is that I do not believe that the plan is sustainable. And I have doubts about the stadium funding legality under the Local Government Act two thousand and two, in particular, sections sixty-two and sixty-three. There's no time for me to come into it here, but we, staff have given me legal advice from our lawyers. I believe there is still a significant problem there. And I don't think that we can simply take it off and pretend that it's all okay. Thank you for your time.
Council Benson Pope.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just wanted to ask if you wanted a separate motion about the issue in respect of surf life saving that's referred to on seventeen-three, where the suggestion in the paper was that an additional word be added to make it clear that the thirteen thousand was additional rather than their total growth.
That's one we're doing first. Who'd be before sir?
Further speakers. Council Wilson.
I can understand Council of Vandivus's frustrations. And I, I share many of his concerns. However, I think that takes away from what has been a very, very good process. And I'd like to congratulate the new chief finance officer and his team for putting together what I think is by far and away the best presented annual plan that we've had in my time as council. And I don't want to take away from what I think should be a credit to the CEO for getting the staff to the point where we have limited the rates reduction to three percent. I think any other statement by the Council of Vandivus, who doesn't acknowledge that part of the hard work of the team, is unfortunate. And I'd just like to say thank you.
Further speakers. Council of New.
The great thing about Council of Vandivus, he always ignites discussion. And that's healthy in a democracy. But I think Council of Vandivus alludes some important aspects of the council's situation. And one or two immediately come to mind, and when he talks about the possible, not illegal, but would suggest that we are perhaps doing something wrong in the way we are providing these documents, reflecting our financial situation now and going forward. Audit New Zealand conduct a very thorough audit of council's activities on an annual basis. I think we currently have a standard and pause rating of a double-way outlook stable, I believe. And if we all took Council of Vandivus's approach, that we abstain from voting on this annual plan document, I would suggest that the outcome of that would be that our chief executive would probably end up in, behind bars, or potentially we would be null and void as a council. Because if you don't adopt an annual plan by the thirtieth of June, you effectively can't operate as a council. So no disrespect to Council of Vandivus, you make some good points. But I feel that if we all took that approach, we'd be in a state of flux.
We just have to get a better plan.
Further speakers. Well, I'd like to commend this plan and this budget to both council and the community. I think that we need to look at it in terms of not just this year, but the previous three years, where three and a half to four years ago, the council of the day set as limits to the rate increases going forward as five percent, four percent, and then three percent thereafter. And the five percent related to the year when the projected rate increase was eleven point nine. And they weren't as high as that in the, they weren't as high as that projected in the following two years, but they were high, seven point something, I believe, in the second. And for this, for this budget, it was something like five point six or five point seven, or something like that. So I think that in the first instance, our staff and our CEO, and our previous CEO, took the bull by the horns, really did a sterling job of taking out an extraordinary amount of operating expenditure, found a hollow of efficiencies. And I don't believe there's probably been a time in the history of this council where the community has been promised limits on their rates increases three years in a row ahead of time, and they have achieved them. And I'm pretty proud of that. And I'm pretty proud of this council for achieving that, because it wasn't done by just the chief executive, it wasn't just done by the staff, it was done by the team. And council maintained discipline throughout this, this whole process. As Council Wilson said, it was a very good process this year, very constructive and very constrained financially. I would point out that the challenges that Council of Vandivus referred to are all well on our, our agenda. We know that there are issues with the stadium. That is why the CEO has instituted a review. And clearly, it would have been putting the cart before the horse to assume that we knew the answers to that review and put them in place before the review was finished. So clearly, we had to continue funding it the way it has been going, but in a restrained way while that review is, is taking place. I would issue a word of caution too, that while we've had three years of considerable restraint, we are not out of the woods in terms of challenges. And next year's budget will be as tough, if not tougher, to achieve our ambitions of a three, no more than a three percent rate rise. But, but as I say, with that, I commend this, this plan and this budget. And I think that we can take some pride in what we've achieved. Council of Staines, would you like to exercise your word of advice?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm more of a glass half-full and glass half-empty. And I personally think that this plan does, in fact, put us on a good track going forwards. I accept that we have increasing costs coming in terms of some of our infrastructure renewals, but we have known that for some time. And there are plans to cope with those changes. It's not as though this document ignores that point. Coming to rates increases, I personally think a three percent rate increase, in fact, the real underlying rate increase before we put funding towards debt reduction was close to two point six percent. From the position that we had forecast, that was a significant reduction. And I'd also like to add my congratulations to the chief executive and all the staff who put in an awful lot of effort to get that number. And I know they're already working on trying to find a way of keeping it within the three percent for the coming year. And that will be a difficult, difficult task to achieve. But I know they'll, they'll go at it with a lot of enthusiasm. And hopefully, we will see a result close to the three percent at the end of that period. The stadium, of course, I suppose still is the elephant in the room. As the mayor has mentioned, there is a review. I see that review as potentially offering us an opportunity to put the stadium on a better foot in terms of it operating as a business. But I don't think that we could expect that that will significantly reduce the cost to rate payers. The significant cost to rate payers comes from the original debts that were incurred in order to build the stadium. And we still have to deal with that. By far, the largest cost to, to DVML in operating their business is the lease that they pay that is based on the size of the debt. So. So, um, it was good that we could do some more debt reduction in this annual plan. We have to continue to maintain that focus. It's the only way that we're going to see us reach a point where firstly, the sta- the stadium itself is no longer as great a burden on the ratepayer, but secondly, that we can push on with some of the capital works that are in abeyance due to the fact that we have enough debt to keep us busy for the meantime. So I fully support this plan.
Okay, I'm gonna put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Vandevos's abstention is noted. Right, back to item, uh, 17A, and I'll move from the chair that the minutes of the council meeting, annual plans hearings and deliberations held on the 6th to the 9th, the 13th to the 16th, and the 19th of May 2014 be confirmed as a correct record. Second, the councillor Staines. Discussion on that, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, on to item 18, setting of rates for 2014-15 financial year. Now, Carolyn, is there anything you'd like to preface? Uh, any questions?
No, Your Worship.
So, we're on to 18. Councillors, any questions of item 18? Okay. Oh, Commissioner Staines.
I just have one question, Your Worship. Um, it relates to, uh, page 18.3, item F, the third bullet point. I, I was just unsure here, it says $369 including GST per unit of water. Um, is that a, a unit being one cubic metre? It seems awfully expensive for one cubic metre of water, but I am assuming that that's on the basis of that amount per day, 365 days of the year.
Yes, what it says. Your Worship, yes, per day.
Per day. Per day.
It's the way we measure it on a rural scheme.
Any further questions? Commissioner Hawkins.
Um, thank you. I have a question around the limit on fixed charging, which I understand is set at 30% and we're currently, uh, at 26% of our total rates revenue. Is that trending, in which direction is that figure trending?
Uh, Your Worship, um, it has been stayed, it's stayed at around 26% for the last few years.
Okay, so, so the warm Dunedin target rate scheme, for example, has made no impact on that?
No, it hasn't to this point, so, I mean, if that started to get significant, we would start raising that as you're considering those, um, warm Dunedin options.
All right, being no further questions, would someone like to move the recommendations? Commissioner Kelvick? Second, the councillor Staines. Discussion? Commissioner Wavis.
We have inherited a long, uh, history of rates differentials in setting rates, and I accept that, uh, that the various reasons for those differentials may or may not be valid now, but that we are to some extent stuck with them. The much more recent differential for the stadium, to me, highlights a general problem that we have with our rating differentials, and that is that there doesn't seem to be a significantly, uh, accurate attempt in setting rating differentials to reflect the actual services that the DCC provides. Um, coming back to the stadium differential, it's been claimed, and perhaps correctly, that the amount of rates being collected, uh, in the stadium area now is the same for what was collected when it was a series of streets, some vacant properties, and not much happening. And that that somehow justifies, uh, giving an annual $1.9 million subsidy to that particular, uh, business. If however, you were to look at rates as reflecting the services which the ratepayers are paying to provide to, in this case, the stadium, you've got four massive power supplies, one on each corner of the stadium, you've got whole new drainage systems, you've got State Highway 88, uh, major works, millions of dollars' worth, you've got an incredible amount of infrastructure which the city has provided, and ratepayers have provided, for which they are now not getting a rate return. If we are to allow businesses to develop in a, uh, ideal way into the future, we need to look not just at differentials like the stadium, for which I believe there is very little justification, but we need to look at the general commercial versus residential, uh, rates differential, which is very slowly creeping down over 10 years because there's a recognition that it has been too great. But I think what we really should be doing is looking at that differential and saying, what does it cost us to provide a service to a residential, uh, address, and what does it cost to provide that same service to a commercial, uh, address? And have that as a starting point at least for setting your differentials. I recognise that there are other considerations that come into it, but to me, the fundamental consideration should always be, what is the value of the services that we are providing to our businesses, to our residents, to our big council-controlled trading organisations? On that basis, I think we would be able to offer new business, better opportunities here in Dunedin. Currently, it's cheap for a business setting up to go to Christchurch because the differential's not that great. Plus, they've got a whole lot of government handouts and the vast, uh, opportunity of, of having some marginal seats. So, in terms of setting the rates for this year, I don't believe that we have set them with appropriate emphasis on the value that we are supplying and how that is reflected in the way that these rates are set. And for that reason, I'll be voting against the setting of the rates.
Further speakers? Commissioner Kelvick, would you like to exercise your word of advice?
No, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No. Record.
On to the 19. Statement to the 10 of Dunedin City Holdings Limited, subsidiaries and associated companies. Um, you're still in the hot seat, David. So, do you want to kick off with anything, or do you want to just go straight into questions?
So, I guess, um, what we're asking for is approval of sentence 10, probably 10 of the coming year, um, and really, shall I just take any questions?
Any? Questions, councillors? Commissioner Thompson?
Um, just for clarification, sorry, can't find the right page. Um, in the Aurora statement on page eight of nine, oh, sorry, our number, um, 19A10, the 15.3, I, I, I'm just questioning what, how relevant that is now. Um, I, I'm, I'm, my, given the chorus rollout of, um, uh, high-speed broadband, slow though it might be, um, can you, can you clarify, please, what the relevance of that point is now?
You, you're dead right, it's probably not relevant for the current environment, given that Downer Chorus won the contract, so, um, we can remove it going forward.
Uh, can I just clarify, and I don't know whether anyone here knows the answer, but my understanding is that Delta did install some fibre, and they were certainly looking for customers and maybe customers. And if they still have that fibre, and they still have a customer, or even if they don't have a customer, I assume that it's still an asset, which is why I would imagine they may want to keep it there, given that the context in which it was initially paid for was, they, their position was protected by this because they did feel initially, given that they were putting the fibre in a council's dis- direction, that they may not get a full market return on it, and they wanted to protect their position in that regard. So my question is, do they still own fibre in the ground or don't they? I don't know if anyone here knows the answer.
There's, there are some links that they do own that I understand. I think one of them come, goes from this building up to Mwana Pool. Uh, they may also own the link that goes from here to the recording studio, and I'm not sure about that. Um, but certainly they, they would have some very small investments in that area.
And I believe that could be in others as well, so. So, that's as much of an explanation as I can offer.
Well, it's just unclear to me, and, uh, it's obviously happened before, before my time, but, um, uh, that's fine if it's there. Uh, it just doesn't seem to have a context that I could relate to, but if it's got one, fine. Um, the other question I had was, um, sorry. Again, in Aurora, the, um, shareholders' funds are represented, they're, uh, basically unchanged through that three-year period, but the intention to, to move to an equity ratio of 50%, um, and I, I've just really got a question around whether or when you would expect that to occur under the current, um, operating, uh, model that's, uh, that's there. Is that, is that something that is realistically going to be achieved in, in anywhere in the near future? And, and if it is to be achieved, does it have implications for, um, for council in terms of, uh, dividend flow, given that presumably it's going to need to be achieved by retention of, um, of further capital?
So, uh, effectively, uh, if you look at their, um, financial information on the prior page, it shows that their capital expenditure is increasing for the next couple of years and then dropping back down. Um, after year three, you'd, after year four, five and six, you'd quite quickly see a significant increase in their equity percentage. Um, it'd be fair to say there is some discussion between the Dunedin City Holdings Board and their board over what is the correct number. They have come up with the 50% mark or target, um, and there is discussion whether that is too high or too low, too high really. And if, if they do try and achieve that, they will have an impact on dividend flow to the council.
Well, just, uh, part of the reason I asked the question is I, I can certainly see the need in Delta to have a higher equity ratio, but in a company like Aurora, which is, um, doesn't have a lot of competition, um, uh, I'm just wondering whether, um, the implications of raising that equity ratio to 50%, uh, you know, the, the relative balance between its importance to Aurora and what it might do to dividend flow to the city and, and getting that balance right is something that is, you're suggesting is still being looked at by, by DCHL?
Yes, and that, and if you see for that period there, it's just going down slightly. So what we're trying to say is we're trying to get that balance right, um, but we, we have to work with the board because they are a separate entity, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wadi.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, just looking at, um, Dunedin City Holdings, uh, 19D7, um, can you just clarify the dividend forecast, please?
So what that is showing is that for the 2015 year, that we're going to be paying a dividend of 4.458 million, meaning for 16 and 17, that the dividend, um, uh, would be zero. So, and, and the main reason for that is because of the drop in dividends from the subsidiary companies coming through. So you've got Aurora's dividend dropping by, uh, $2 million, you've got City Forest's dividend dropping by $1 million, um, and DCHL has been using some cash reserves to pay dividend, which, um, would have been used up, which means that's down by about a million as well. So, that's effectively a $4 million drop. Um, the key thing there is, I'd say, is that, 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 those are the out years, and we're working very closely with those boards to try and bridge that gap. But, um, and as Commissioner Vandevos has spoken earlier, there has been an underinvestment in Aurora, which has been, um, needs to do some significant capital expenditure, so.
Commissioner Lord.
Um, my question just relates to actually all the companies where they've got a dividend politi- policy, and it's saying borrowing to pay dividends should be avoided. Um, I can understand reasons why when equity is up, you might want to borrow to do that, but did we not have a policy saying that we would not do that, or is it a flexible policy? We won't do it unless we really want to or we need to. Just clarification on that.
I, I'm, I'm probably not the best person to ask, I've only been here six months, whether it is actually there, how much flexibility there is, but my understanding is that there's very, very little flexibility, particularly when you get into DCHL, that they should not be borrowing to pay dividends, so.
They could do if they wanted to.
No, no, the instruction to them has been that we do not want them to borrow for our dividend, and they, um, have concurred that that wouldn't be approved and things to do.
Bring it back here.
They have to bring it back here. Commissioner Vandevos.
I also had marked, Commissioner Lord's question regarding borrowing to pay dividends should be avoided. I believe that especially in Aurora's case, as Commissioner Thompson has eloquently said, Aurora doesn't have a lot of competition. They're essentially able to raise an electricity tax. I think that their SOI should read that borrowing to pay dividends will be avoided. It may be that some other companies might have some reason not to, uh, and, and should be avoided, but in the case of Aurora, uh, I think will be avoided is necessary, because should be avoided basically says, well, you know, we would like you to do this, but actually you still can. And given that SOIs in the past have not been adhered to, and given that when council-controlled trading organisations have gone outside their SOI and gone ahead and done things which they knowingly knew that, that, that they just weren't allowed to do, I'm talking about purchasing $1.2 million worth of seats that was unauthorised, grow lights, um, $1.3 million worth of new TV sets when they had flat screens anyway. Um, given that the SOIs are routinely, in some cases, are not respected, and there doesn't seem to be any comeback when they aren't, I think that what we need in this SOI is something quite specific. And picking up on Commissioner Lord's, uh, suggestion, I would like to move that the dividend policy on page 19.87 should read borrowing to pay dividends will be avoided. Um, I would also like to question the...
That's the receipt in that, and I'm seeking advice on whether we can do more than recommend, but that's fine. Um, we just need to know what we can do and what we can't do.
Sure.
Uh... Would you like to explain? Could you go back to your mic, your microphone?
Uh, just been asked what the process would be where we were council, as the shareholder of the company changed the SOI. Um, without having the act in front of me, uh, I, I'm pretty sure that what is required is that the board needs to be told of the company in advance of your intention. needs to be told of the company in advance of your intention to make a change. And then they get an opportunity then to incorporate that change or not. But it has to be by way of shareholder resolution, so... And again, I would let you go and check the source document, but it wouldn't be possible to do it today without having notified the board in advance of your requirement the shareholder put to change.
So given that it's not possible to do that today, is it possible to leave this lying on the table so that it could be done and we can take it off later? Or is there a timeline on the SOI there as well?
So issue I think we've got here councillor Van de Wiss is that the shareholders actually Dunedin City Holdings limited, so we'd actually have to do, talk to them first because they would then have to talk to Aurora. My only other comment here would be, two other comments I'd say is, one, that these statements of intent, and that comment was in the original one that came to council in February. So that was the ideal opportunity to actually raise an issue then. The second thing, I can think of situations where the company would have to borrow to do just about anything. If you think if they had a major disaster and they had to borrow to do something, that might mean that they would have to pay a dividend out of borrowings. So from my perspective, I think the words should be in there, not will. Because technically, when you borrow, it's very hard to say whether you're borrowing to pay dividends or whether you're borrowing to pay in operational costs or anything else. Because you don't specifically borrow for one particular activity. It's slightly different, it's very different for a DCHL because their activities are quite specific.
I accept that it's in the perhaps too hard basket and that there are difficulties surrounding it. However, in the past, since 2004, my experience has been that without tighter SOIs, they don't actually mean much. And at the end of the day, with these supposedly council-controlled organisations, which another chief executive from up north has characterised as organisations controlling council, we have a problem. And not being able to do anything about it because it's too hard just highlights that. My other question's related to...
Can I just rule on, you propose a motion and...
I'm quite happy to withdraw it.
Because I didn't see much point in accepting one that we couldn't put into effect in any case.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. But in terms of, hopefully someone's listening to us here. I don't imagine that the directorship of Aurora sit up late at night watching Channel 39 for this sort of discussion. But it would be nice to think that councillors, other than Mr Lord and myself, were able to perhaps suggest that they strongly felt that borrowing is something that should be avoided. Also strongly felt that in terms of looking at 19A4, economic 4.7, it says here that the idea is to maximise financial returns, fine. Particular attention will be given to cash flow performance. Now my worry about that and my question is, if they're going to pay particular attention to cash flow performance, where does that leave their attention to decades of deferred maintenance? Because they are really quite oppositional statements. And where in corporate goals, I'm looking here again at economic, to ensure that reporting requirements, sorry, 5.7, economic on the next page, to ensure that reporting requirements of the company and the shareholder are met. Where in the last 10 years have we had it reported to us that in fact significant maintenance was being deferred? And does this tighten it up? What I'm asking really is, is there any way of tightening up 4.7, 4.8, 5.7? And the dividend policy is suggested by councillor Lord?
I think I can answer it and say that not by this moment. As Mr Mackenzie said, the best opportunity would have been February when the draft statement of intent came to us.
Okay, my final question then, your worship, is given that that's the state of affairs and given that I would like to highlight these issues, what's your suggestion to me about how I should vote on this?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't give you advice on voting, councillor Van de Wiss.
You couldn't stand it.
Anyway, questions, we're on question time, councillor Lord.
Can I give councillor Van de Wiss some...? No, I won't, no. Just following up on that question with regards to what it says in the Aurora's statement of intent. If you go to 19D7, the statement of intent for Dunedin City Holdings, and you look at the dividend policy, it doesn't mention, the words are different, talks about they expect to pay from accumulated profits over the next year, next three years, any dividends, et cetera. So the wording's different in the City Holdings statement of intent. But my question was associated with Aurora, looking at capital expenditure, and once again picking up on the point that's already been raised about maintaining the existing assets. Have we any idea of the percentage of capital expenditure which over the three years documented on the bottom under seven on page 19A6 is about $90 million over a three-year period? Have we got any idea of how much of that is associated with existing assets rather than creating new assets? Because I imagine capital expenditure would include both.
Yeah, so one of the issues you face when you do a major capital plan is it's a combination of deferred maintenance, asset replacement and upgrades. So effectively all those are in there, there will be some allowance for new expenditure, particularly up in growth areas, so central Tago. I don't have those figures off the top of my head. So what they're looking at here though is a key core infrastructure mainly in the Dunedin network because that's where they've got the infrastructure that is at most risk.
councillor Hawke.
Thank you, your worship. I had a question about each of these statements of intent relate to, refer to alignment with council policy. But I couldn't find anything that refers to an attempt to align them across the DCHL group. And there are irregularities in the procurement clause and triple bottom line accounting is mentioned in some places but not others. And I wonder whether, and again, not looking for something to change for the coming year, but whether that work was, whether that's ever on the agenda and whether that's part of that process figured by Naevy.
So one of the issues that I want to look at this year is the statement of intent process because I personally actually agree that it has not been taken as seriously as it should have been in its council core document. So I'm starting that work shortly, I just need to get these out of the way and a few other things. Because it needs to be great consistency across the group because you're right, it's not always consistent. But at the end of the day, these are the documents for all those individual boards. So we need to give them feedback, bring them along to journey.
Without wanting to hold you any further, I would want to draw your attention to 19C3, the mission statement for Delta Unitarity Services Limited. The second sentence of which is, "We do this by providing smart thinking and quality services with highly satisfied customers and strong performance and by always working safely." And I realise this is high level, but I don't even know if that's a sentence as such. And maybe if, I know we don't have long until the end of this financial year, but maybe something like, is that editorial, maybe? Can that be changed at this point, Steve?
That's the mission statement and I don't think it's appropriate that, if that's what they want to try and achieve, I don't think we should be holding them back.
councillor Thompson?
No, look, I was confused by councillor Van de Wiss into thinking we were in discussion, but clearly you're still asking questions. Is it the intention that we will have discussions?
We hadn't got to discussion yet.
That's all right, I just wasn't sure I'll hold it until...
That's fine. councillor Kopp.
I don't see anything in here, perhaps it isn't supposed to be, but is there intended to be any reporting about risk and audit matters? Because it seems to me that, especially at the moment, we're probably more conscious that that might be a useful thing, not only for Dunedin City Council to pair up its own kilt, but for DCHL to not only pair up its own kilt but report to us about that particular pairing function. Is that an appropriate thing in a statement of intent that they might report back to us to give us some assurance that somebody else who's really part of our family has done checks and balances in particular ways?
Throw on me because the pairing up your own kilt has got me scared for a start. So I guess the comment there is that the vast majority of the companies have their own audit committee. And one of the big pushes that's coming from DCHL is around health and safety at the moment because that's a particular focus that's happening out in the wider environment. So we are upping the reporting from those companies into DCHL. And I guess the link between DCHL and the audit and risk committee at council here is myself and I'll be looking at giving an update to that committee on what's happening across the wider group. So I'm not sure if that helps. Under that act, as far as I'm aware, there's no requirement for those audit and risk committees to report into council.
Might that be a good idea? Otherwise, we have no idea.
As you say...
Except for you having an idea, which I appreciate.
Throw on me again, we have no idea. So I guess the, we're trying to get the formal process particularly around their reporting improved on a monthly basis because that's when you are really going to see the benefit of how risk has been managed. And it's just, you know, I had conversations with Aurora last week about their insurance programme. So there is that wider group work coming on, but it is going to take some time.
Well, next question, would someone like to move the recommendations? councillor Thompson, senior councillor Staines, now we're discussing. councillor Thompson, would you like to speak to your...?
Yes, I would. Look, I think that the conversation that we've had around the appropriateness or inappropriateness and how tight the wording is around borrowing to pay dividends is important because it keeps it in front of all of our minds. But I do want caution that moving from should to will is not necessarily the most appropriate way to proceed. And I say that with some trepidation because I'll probably read in tomorrow's OTT that councillor Thompson says we should borrow to pay dividends and councillor Thompson definitely doesn't say that. But what Mr Mackenzie points out with regard to the difficulty of separating out what you're borrowing for is really quite important. And I think that we have to give directors the responsibility to make responsible decisions. It's our job to remove those directors if we don't believe they are making responsible decisions. And what has happened in the past is that, for all sorts of reasons, the council has made it very clear to those directors what it wants them to do, which is find some cash and we don't care where you flog it from, but we want it. Now, that's a very different situation, I believe, to the one that we have now, where councillors are absolutely not saying that to the directors. And the directors therefore have got to be charged with running these companies in the most responsible manner. And if I can just use a hypothetical example as to why it should stay as should rather than will or whatever the words were. If you're in a company that's maybe making $10 million profit a year and you're paying a dividend to the council of $2 million a year, what the council wants is some certainty over time. That's the biggest problem we've got at the moment is we have not had certainty over the last few years. We've seen it go from a completely unrealistic figure because we were demanding it to one where we're actually looking at none at all over the next couple of years. There's nothing responsible about that. What is responsible is for directors to manage the company in such a way that the dividend flow is even, that in years where they might have been able to afford to pay more, they don't. And they might even put some of that into debt repayment. And in years in the future when they can't afford to pay any at all, they borrow some back. Now, that would be looked at potentially in saying, well, you're borrowing to pay dividends. Well, there's an alternative, you can get a chocolate box and stick it under the counter and put $2 million in that and it won't be noticed and then you pull it out again and pay it. But that's just stupid. So you have to have the flexibility to repay debt and borrow it again and manage that cash flow over time. And if you were that same company that was making $10 million a profit a year and giving $2 million to the council and you had a need for whatever reason to invest $20 million in new development, well, would you expect that a responsible company would say, well, we're just not going to pay any dividends for years and we'll wait until we've saved up enough of those dividends to pay that $20 million, the $2 million a year, in 10 years' time we'll be able to pay the investment out of dividends? And you won't have any in the meantime? It just wouldn't happen that way. How it would happen is that the company would borrow that $20 million and it would make a decision around what was the sustainable cash flow going forward to repay that borrowing and to maintain the appropriate level of dividends. That's what we've got to charge these directors with. And I think one of the fundamental changes has been that DCHL is now managing that process. And if we were to see that DCHL was doing the opposite of what they're clearly doing right now, for example, saying to Aurora, "You have to address these years of lack of maintenance and you've got to do it urgently because you're a key infrastructure and if you don't, you're irresponsible." If we see them standing saying, "No, don't do that, pull the bucks out again and give it to us so we can pay these dividends," then you'll start to see figures in here that are not sustainable and we should react to that. So for me, it's about having the right directors in place at DCHL, holding those companies accountable. The separation of directors is crucial to that and we've achieved that. So I just caution about, we have a clear understanding of what we want to achieve. I'll be talking as long as councillor Van de Wiss shortly. And we just need to make sure that we hold directors accountable to that and not put strictures on them that no responsible director, I believe, would consider acceptable.
further speakers. councillor Van de Wiss.
The history of directors and what they consider to be responsible is not a pretty one. Our job here in noting this recommendation today really is to try and send a message that what has happened in the past, and I'm thinking of directors putting $14 million into Jack's Point in Lugget as an example, and there's plenty of others I could think of. What has happened in the past is simply not something which we are going to countenance in the future. It's been said that it's basically too hard to change any of this SOI and I accept that things in the too hard basket are often the things that we really should be looking at. But I also accept that we have a new position in Mr Grant Mackenzie, who now has oversight over DCHL as well as VCC Finances. And what I'm hoping will happen in the noting of these recommendations is that the general tenor of what has been expressed around the table and the very valid comments made by councillor Thompson regarding what we expect from directors will be listened to or transferred. Mr Thompson said that if directors don't do their job, then it's our job to remove those directors. And all the years I've been on council, I've never seen any way of doing that. And that seems to be in the too hard basket as well. I do... I tried doing it in 2004, 2005, 2006 without any possibility of success. And I don't believe that the recent change in directorship... that the recent change in directorships has necessarily cured the problem. We still have similar structures. The fact that the directors of individual companies are no longer also the directors of DCHL helps a bit, but if you've got a group of directors who want to spend $14 million on something that council wouldn't approve of and they go out of their way to make sure that we don't get to know about it, we still have a problem. So in noting the statements of intent, I think we need to recognise that we actually leave on trust a whole lot of things to directors and that really the only link that we have to looking at that trust is through the position that Grant Mackenzie now holds and that I'm confident that he's going to take that very seriously and look hard at it. I would also like to note that when we are noting statements of intent, we recognise that when statements of intent have been stepped outside of in the past, there has been no consequence for those that basically ignored the conditions of a statement of intent. So I'm able to vote for the recommendation, given that it's only noting, given that it's too hard to do anything about what's there anyway and given also that statements of intent in the past actually haven't mattered a lot. They've been abused and my hope is that with the new structure, oversight of the general management of finance, that we will not see a return to the kind of directorship decisions that have got us in a lot of trouble in the past. Cheers.
I'll just pick up on some of councillor Thompson's points and address some of councillor Vandevos's. First of all, these statements of intent are not the same as the statements of intent the companies had some time ago. These have been negotiated to some extent between council and the companies in response to the issues that councillor Vandevos refers to, but that he doesn't seem to think have been addressed. That's where these statements of intent came from. And I would note that it was because the companies acted in a way and had chocolate boxes in the past that miraculously produced dividends out of nowhere that we did replace the boards. So councillor Vandevos is completely mistaken. This previous council, of which you were a member, replaced the boards almost in their entirety and certainly DCHL. So they have been changed and they were changed for very good reason and you have enunciated them, but I would caution against saying that nothing has changed. I mean, you can keep saying, if you like, oh, well, they could do something again that they did last time, therefore we won't trust them ever again. Well, that's pointless. We have boards to do things and if we don't put them in place and don't put the controls around them, then we might as well do it ourselves. That would be silly. So I think these statements of intent came from discussions between council and the new boards, as they were in the last couple of years, and they were specifically put in place to address the issues that we all acknowledge what we had before. In the absence of any other speaker, councillor Thompson, do you wish to... All right, I'm going to put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. We're on to item 20. Which is being stated in the Dunedin Venues. Any...
No.
No. Very prudent. Questions, councillor Wilson? Are you happy to move? Well, any questions in the meantime? Councillor Vandevos.
Is there anything in the statement of intent that would preclude current directors from next year going out and buying yet another $1.3 million worth of newer new flat screen TVs?
There isn't the fact that the amount of their ad spend on capital expenditure is only up to $1 million, so they can do anything up to $1 million. So if it's above that, they would have to get... They'd have to get council approval.
Except that was also the case for the temporary seating, which they failed to get our approval for.
It may have been a case for a number of things as well. I can't comment on that.
Well, I'm just saying that...
Councillor Thompson, you've asked a question. Any further questions? All right, you're moving it, councillor Wilson, Secretary of Sec, councillor Staines. Discussion. All those in favour, please say aye. Against?
No, recorded, please.
Carry. Item 21. Statement of intent, meeting venues, management limited. Questions? Someone like to move? Move, councillor Bezett, Secretary of Sec, move. Discussion. I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against?
No, recorded, please.
Right. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Item 22. Direction, accident assessment. I'm going to say accident prone buildings. Assessment timeframe for Dunedin earthquake prone buildings policy. Welcome, Liam.
You wish that there is the legal advice associated with this item as well?
Yes, so how do we... Here we go.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for that.
In regard to the great paper material, if councillors feel they need to debate the advice as part of the questioning of stream, then you can either choose to waive privilege and move the opinion into the public part of the meeting, or you can use a great paper into public experience to have the discussion, or you can simply recuse it slightly obliquely if you want to do that as part of the debate. We didn't have a wave privilege initially, would that give you an opportunity to consult with us?
Right, so the options are, we deal with this and its recommendations without specific reference to the legal opinion, or we move this item into non-public.
We waive privilege.
Or we waive privilege. So I guess I should just ask, does anyone, without being specific now, given that it's still in great paper, have an issue that they want to debate about the advice, not the paper, but about the advice that has been given to us? So I take it from that that no one would need to reference it in this debate so we can keep this here. If that changes, please let the meeting know and we can think through that. So we'll start with questions. We've got a question, councillor Vandevos. Just before you do, councillor, do you want to kick off anything then?
Do I understand the nub of the issue to be as a recommendation for, that we simply note that these decisions are inconsistent and that we have good reasons for that?
Correct.
That's the nub of the whole issue?
Yep.
I'm happy to move all four recommendations to that effect.
Is there a Secretary of Sec, councillor Staines? Well, is it... Well, I'll take that, but if there are any questions, I'll take them before we go into discussion. Does anyone else want any clarification on anything? In case, it's been moved to the Secretary of Sec. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Hawkins.
Oh, absolutely, question. A question, sorry. It makes reference to if there was an informal push of the deadlines for assessments to be lodged, that we would still make them information available to the building owners. Does that courtesy also extend to building tenants?
Anyone that requires that that information, we provide it to them.
Any further discussion? All right, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against?
Carry.
Here we go. Item 23. Marketing Dunedin Advisory Board and Transition Advisory Group. Anything we'd like to preface the comments we're sharing?
Hopefully the report is self-explanatory, but there is one update and that's that I would like to make a suggested amendment to the terms of reference. At the request of the Chair of the Grodin Eden Partnership, we'd like to add in a line which clarifies what the relationship is between the two bodies, so adding in that the Marketing Dunedin Advisory Group will liaise with and provide updates to the Grodin Eden Partnership. So that's an addition to the terms of reference, which are on 23.6. Let me just add that in at the bottom of the first box in the terms of reference.
Gotcha. Right. Questions, councillor? Councillor Thompson?
Nicola, I don't really understand what the rationale is for delaying it, the notion of delaying the appointment of the ongoing committee until the person who's going to report to them arrives. I don't understand what the rationale is.
Can I just clarify one thing? The director doesn't report to members. It's important, this is a... It did actually say that in the report and I do want to clarify that. So the director reports as a staff member. Until the director, until we know who the director is and the skill set and what they bring with them, it's kind of hard to know what extra is needed. There's some names that we're banding around, we will bring all of those to you for consideration for who should be on the advisory group, but it's highly likely, depending on who you pick, that the person may well bring one or two names of particularly good people with them and you wouldn't want to exclude that, for example. And in addition, they're going to come, I would imagine reasonably quickly with how they should structure the team and where the focus should be after having that first round of discussions with the stakeholder groups.
Thank you, Nicola. Further questions? Good question. You... I'm happy to make a question, but councillor Pitt.
And I'm happy to second this. There's just a question about the advertisement for the director role and it's to do with one line in that advertisement which goes something like, "The new role..." is mandated to deliver the economic development strategy", quote. And it just seemed like a daunting prospect, I think, for one person doing that.
But just, yeah, I should have brought this to your attention earlier. Anyway. Can I suggest we just change mandated to focused on?
I think those advertisements have run their course. I think it closes on Friday. There was, the consultants spent a bit of time with all of the, with quite a number of the stakeholders and asked for those quite a lot of input into both the advertisement and the job description. It's a job that there is no shortage of eagerly anticipated, a high degree of interest and people having an opinion on where the priorities should lie would be feeling the same.
So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, you wish to speak to it, councillor? All right, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carry. Item 24. Creative Future. Rock the attitude. On its way. Well, Rebecca, Maria, Cara, do you wish to preface a question on...
We do have one thing. The, this has been a project that's had many people participate in it so far and one of the joys of that is last minute changes. One of the last minute changes is the proposed change to the name of the strategy to, from Toi'au to Aratui and this is as a result of a conversation with some members of the Maori community and they've suggested that this would be a stronger name for the strategy and it's our suggestion that it would be best to put that out now so that people can consult on, or people can respond to this name or the initial name, which was Toi'au, and tell us their preference. So that would be our suggestion that the strategy goes out with this name.
Well, we add that to the, well, that's an alternative.
Yeah.
That's your new name.
That's our new name.
All right, questions, councillors? Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, you worship. From memory, through the spatial plan process and particularly the warehouse precinct work as a community participant in those processes, there was a lot of angst from within the arts and cultural community about the effects of gentrification and the potentially perverse effects of shining too much of a spotlight on what they do and where they live and work. It's not expressly mentioned in this, but I wonder what work has gone on potentially with city development or urban planning as to how those sorts of roles could be, that it goes?
Yeah, at this stage, we've only really had high level conversations about that, but from my memory of one of those conversations was Brody Oney was a key advocate for ensuring that that did not happen and she's been a member of the group that's brought this together. So I'm not sure that we've explored it directly at this stage, but it's certainly part of that thinking that's gone on to get us to where we are.
I'm happy to move the recommendation.
Any further questions? Can I ask a question?
Not a question, I just wish to move the resolution as amended and before us now.
You're moving?
Yes.
The new recommendations are seconded? Councillor Hawkins? Discussion. Or you want to speak to that, councillor Pitt?
Yeah, I should first of all pay tribute to the process. I think having been involved marginally with it, I'd like to thank the staff for steering us to this point and working with transforming the need in a collective of artists to getting us to this point. The way I see it, the strategy is both aspirational and inspirational among all the strategies, I think, that the council's assembling now and we're getting towards the end of the process of that, I guess. This one, I think, does inspire it. It also speaks to me of how Dunedin has been an artistic city almost from the beginning with some wonderful artists involved here. We've had patrons of the arts here, especially around those days when we were developing as New Zealand's leading commercial centre. And I think we've seen in recent times too, some wonderful artistic endeavour happening in the city, not the least those wonderful street murals that one of these days, I think, will be quite a major attraction for people. I see too that such initiatives as the UNESCO International City of Literature pitch that we've made and hopefully that by the end of the year, we will see something coming of that. So...
Not a question, I just wish to move the resolution as amended and before us now.
You'll move in?
Yes.
The new recommendations are seconded. Councillor Hawkins? Discussion. Well, you want to speak to that councillor Pitt?
Yeah, I should first of all pay tribute to the process. I think, having been involved marginally with it, I'd like to thank the staff for steering us to this point and working with transforming the need in a collective of artists to getting us to this point. The way I see it, the strategy is both aspirational and inspirational among all the strategies, I think, that the council's assembling now, and we're getting towards the end of the process of that, I guess. This one, I think, does inspire it. Also speaks to me of how Dunedin has been an artistic city almost from the beginning, with some wonderful artists involved here. We've had patrons of the arts here, especially around those days when we were developing as New Zealand's leading commercial centre. And I think we've seen in recent times too, some wonderful artistic endeavour happening in the city. Not the least those wonderful street murals that one of these days I think will be quite a major attraction for people. I see too such initiatives as the UNESCO International City of Literature pitch that we've made, and hopefully that by the end of the year, we will see something coming of that. So we look at, I guess, today, having the basis for a strategy such as this. When we look at our libraries, and we look at our museums, and our art gallery, and all the associated things that are going on in the city to do with the arts, with the visual arts, with the performing arts, the literary and the musical arts. We are a superb city. And hopefully this draft strategy, which will go out of course for public consultation and feedback, will give us another boost in artistic endeavour and Dunedin.
Thanks. Would you, councillor Benson Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Jevon. I'd just like to speak briefly in congratulating the people who've been involved in this draft. I was really pleased, I'm really pleased to see it on the table comparatively quickly in the term of this new council, which you're obviously not surprised by my joy. And I'd like to congratulate the people who've been involved in it and really follow on from what councillor Pitt said. This is an extraordinary city with some amazing cultural institutions and very creative people. And sadly, in some ways, we haven't done as well as we should have in terms of all sorts of aspects of support for artistic and cultural endeavour. And I think people are beginning to realise more and more what a key part of the whole, the whole panoply of the greater small city image, that public art, community art, cultural performance, and the sort of institutions we have that councillor Pitt's already mentioned. And so I welcome this. I hope that people will be positive as they look at it and enhance the document further, and that we can move forward as a council and a city on an agreed pathway into even more involvement from such a well-endowed city in these areas.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, your worship, and I'd like to totalk what councillor Pitt and councillor Benson Pope have said with regards to the process. It's been a long three years getting to this point since transforming Dunedin, kind of came out of the white off work and started to really push for a revision that is now 17 years in the making, should it be signed off this year. We're just over a week now into this year's Puakamatriki Festival, which is a month-long celebration of the Maori New Year here in Aotearoa Dunedin. It's a relative newcomer to our cultural calendar, but what makes it special for me is the way that it celebrates community and creativity side by side, whether that's a neighbourhood get-together or world-class contemporary dance. The excellence and the everyday and the exceptional are celebrated equally. And this draft strategy hopefully will give us the tools to be able to encourage that two-pronged approach year-round in all of our city's arts and cultural endeavours. It's worth noting that while council plays a coordinating role in the Puakamatriki programme, the 40 odd events on the calendar are largely community-driven, whether that's your kids' school or your nationwide Maori contemporary arts network. The strategy, as it stands in its draft form, sends a strong signal that this council takes the arts and culture seriously and sees it as vital to Dunedin, to our quality of life, to our capacity to attract talent, to retain graduates, to, if it has to be expressed as such, the cash registers of struggling businesses, given the direct and indirect economic benefit that's outlined in the strategy itself. And Dunedin has a proud history of developing and retaining world-class creative people. Some of this country's most significant artists, writers, actors and musicians have called Dunedin home, and even the ones that have gone on to live elsewhere still hold a very strong affinity for this place and serve as very credible and noble ambassadors internationally for our rich cultural heritage. Jim Geddes, who built or has helped build the now prolific Eastern Southland Gallery in Gore from scratch, likes to say that people that he would never have imagined would avail themselves of the toilet and the tea rooms in Gore now queue up to show work in his gallery. It's become a de facto public gallery essentially for the greater central Atago region, given that locality's lack of interest in such infrastructure. I've had countless conversations with touring musicians over the years coming through Dunedin who say much the same thing. They go out of their way, out of pocket a lot of the time to come and perform in Dunedin for our community, because a bunch of kids here 30 years ago put out a couple of records that have made their way around the world and back again. We have the myth at our disposal, we may as well make most of it. Up until Ralph Hoatery passed, sadly, I don't think it's much of an exaggeration to say that New Zealand's greatest living artist, as he was at the time, was among us in the West Harbour region. And up until a teenage pop singer from the North Shore blew up relatively recently, it's not much of an exaggeration to say that New Zealand's most popular band of all time met Dunedin and were so fond of the place that they named their band after their flat on Castle Street. All tastes, questions of taste aside, it's hard to diminish their commercial success nationally and internationally. These are both from very different ends of the creative spectrum, but they're both Dunedin success stories. And one of the things I hope this strategy can achieve is starting to look at how we can shift the entrenched humility passed down from our Calvinist forefathers that have come before us that makes us so shy about celebrating our successes and celebrating our achievements. And that remains the core question for me. How can we as a city encourage excellence at the same time as weaving art and cultural expression into the fabric of our public spaces and our everyday lives? But this is a challenge not just for us as a council, but for us as a city. It is a city strategy, as those strategies that have gone before. And it is important that our erstwhile tertiary institutions climb on board this as well. The funding and provision of arts education in the city has been under strain and under threat for some time, no doubt with the heavy hand of the minister in view. But if Dunedin is to continue to capitalise on the vibrancy of the young and hungry, then I think it is important that we keep teaching them the rules that they are setting out to be rebelling against. So again, congratulating everybody for their work on this so far. I commend the strategy for public consultation.
What's the then?
Councillor Hawkins has referred to the Gore Public Art Gallery and what a success it is. He's referred to making the most of the myth. I think we're talking Dunedin sound there. Not many people realise that Split Ends also started as a band in Dunedin called The Gentlemen. And the basis of Split Ends, that is to say, the first three players, and obviously Mr. Pitt here is old enough to know them personally. But, and I do applaud the inclusive nature of this document. However, when you get something that's that inclusive and it runs to 34 pages, how many people do you seriously expect to read it, let alone absorb a lot of what's in there? What I would like to ask, and this is in the, this is in the spirit of councillor Benson Pope's suggestion that we enhance the document further, what I would love to suggest is that we could enhance the document further by producing a one-page bullet point summary that would capture at least some of the essence of what we're trying to say here, if that were possible. And if the, you know, obviously large number of people that contributed to it would not find that objectionable, I think that that would actually enhance the document further. Something that I think the document does sort of suggest, but doesn't really nail, is the potential that we have in Dunedin to monetise some areas of the arts. I'm talking about Dunedin taking seriously, perhaps even as seriously as we take sports, taking arts as an industry. I don't have to remind you what Ever did for Sweden or the Beatles did for the UK economy. The Dunedin sound, if we made the most of the myth, I think could do a great deal for us. And that the DCC has got a potential role in there, especially now that we have an association with the University of Atago superb recording studio. There is product to be made out of this town, which I think doesn't get made because we tend to undervalue ourselves. Not only do we undervalue ourselves in terms of the product that could be coming out of here, and the product that we as a city council could help or facilitate the market. But we have a situation where sometimes we don't even recognise that particular artists really do want something of us. Councillor Hawkins talked about the Gore Public Art Gallery and what a success it was. And he also talked about Ralph Hoatery. The connection that's missing there is that an awful lot of Ralph Hoatery's work went to Gore, because we as a city didn't seize the opportunity and didn't make the relationship work as well as it could have with Mr. Hoatery. We had in our midst one of arguably New Zealand's most prolific and productive and monetised, if you like, producers of arts. But we don't have that much of it here. Most of it's gone elsewhere. And I would love to see this strategy set out ways in which, especially in the bullet point, where we are actually going to be more confident of what we have here, and more confident also that we can get a real economic boost from our arts industries. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded, it's been discussed. Councillor Pitt, would you like to exercise your right of the power?
Yes, your worship. Just in terms of the size of the document, one has to agree with councillor Van Dees that it is formidable read, but a very, a read that I think is worth pursuing. But I can agree with him that I like summaries as well, and maybe in the processes we get through towards the end of the document to adopt, that we could have an executive summary at the beginning. In terms of councillor Van Dees's comments about art as a commercial endeavour, page 2422 has a heading there saying, "Making Money", it can be a lucrative area of work actually. And we've seen that through a number of artists in all the sectors actually are making, making a living from it, or at least a part of a living. And just finally, I don't think by itself the strategy is going to create, give Dunedin the status of one of the world's great small cities, but it will be an extremely important part of the way we develop towards that goal. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. Thank you. On to item 25, elected members' remuneration rates for 1415. Welcome Sandy. Is there anything you would like to get off with? So questions, councillors? Any questions of Ms. Graham? Move councillor Van Dees? Is there a second, councillor Hall? Discussion. Councillor Wilson?
Just want to note the irony of councillor Van Dees moving this, and I think if there's one thing we could all abstain from, the board wouldn't end this meeting today. I'm just noting it. And I shall abstain in principle.
Any further discussion? All right, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, councillor Van Dees, did you wish to... I'm going to put all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry. Thank you Sandy. Sterling. Right, I'm going to move from the chair as per your opinion, public experience, following past proceedings, and if you vote 26 or 36, second councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry.